Thank you, everybody. We have a quorum. Melvin Edwards, Chairman of the REO, and we are joined by my colleague, Tim Allen, and Lindsay Hackett is not available. Fiore Grisetti is a voting member of the committee, and everybody else knows each other. Thank you all for being here. Eloy and then Liz Frank, Ben Murphy, welcome. Appreciate your being here. And don't have a lot, but I know the the latest numbers that I have here for the numbers is from three eight twenty-three. And as for the D Barry Brookings, let me just start by asking if we can get in entertain a motion to accept a minutes from the previous meeting? Fiore or Tim?
What's up, Ben?
Make a motion. Tim made it. I'll second it. All in favor? Quick question, Melvin, where did you get those? Were those in an email just recently? I didn't see any attachments anywhere. I could have missed it.
It came out last week.
In an email, though?
Yes.
Thanks. All right. I'll look for it now. Thank you.
And so.
I was gonna say, I can I can share the my screen if that if that would be easier for folks.
Sure, that would work. I have a copy, but I obviously if you already doesn't have a copy, please, if you could, I see we're joined by Lisa as well. Welcome, everyone. If you could share that, and then you could either you or Che would like to comment on it or give us an explanation of what we're looking at, that would work real well.
You want to go, Liz, or would you like me to?
Oh, I I could you you could totally start, and I can fill in the blanks, or I can go. It's totally up to you. I'm just gonna scroll right to the bottom. Can everybody see?
No, it started off right, and then it went narrowed out.
Went left real quick.
Okay, try it again.
All right.
Yep, there we go.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, I can start, and you can fill in since you have a little bit more intimacy. So the spring, most of the numbers have basically stayed the same. And the first phase of the project will be fixing up in the next few months. And then the demo of the other school will happen in the parking lot will be put in. Am I am I correct so far?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. So Springfield residents came in at nineteen point four percent. Veterans, five point three, women, five point four, minorities, thirty-four point eight percent. The numbers have been pretty steady. I know we've talked about a few of the subs and some situations as far as adding women for William Roberts Electric. CJM will be ramping up, circling back with Higgins as far as another woman as well. And then Liz, you can kind of take it from there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Che. Yeah, so a lot of the focus for us certainly is is the numbers can tell. When we're having conversations with folks at this blade is, you know, helping to increase both the participation for women and folks of color. So to that end, for anybody who, you know, is winding down, we do have, as Chair alluded to, a couple of folks who are, you know, coming on board for, you know, landscaping and things like that, we have been reaching out to them as well to stress the importance of you know, of the REO, making sure that they are, you know, if they're starting, they're starting off on the wrong foot, on the right foot, and then if they are wrapping up, they are, you know, doing so with, you know, with the participation in mind. And so to that end, over the last couple of weeks, we've been reaching out to, you know, different subcontractors, you know. One that comes to mind right now, Liza Glass in particular, is they are, you know, doing the the end of project kind of punchless cleanup, things like that. They have committed to to help increase their participation for for women. So we are pushing everybody as as much as possible, knowing that we, you know, do have the next couple of months is finishing trades. Come on to, you know, to try and make up as much ground as as possible with those folks who will still be on and for those folks will be coming on board. So I'll just stop there and just see if there are any questions.
Gentlemen, ladies, any questions from anyone regarding what we've heard to this point? Anything that you wanted to add, Fiore or Che, Tim?
Yeah. Yeah. Can I go, Melvin?
Sure, certainly, please.
Okay, just to follow up on Springfield residents, since we seem to struggle on that one, I think it's the goal is thirty percent or thirty-five or something. Am I am I wrong?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five percent.
You're right.
And and we're around twenty. Have we done anything to focus on that to try? To try to improve that number? Anything different?
Yes, so we have, you know, certainly when we have conversations with 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 folks as they come on board, you know, we're asking them to, you know, give us their projections for you know, their their participation across the board for residents in particular, I mean, for the entire, you know, participation for the REO. We have reached out to, you know, community groups, and we have had some some success, you know, being able to help some secure. You know, residents, we, you know, have done some drop offs at local churches and organizations. So we, you know, certainly, you know, folks like, you know, from the carpenters union have been incredible in making sure that if we have a need to bring on residents, you know, they're, you know, they're working to to do that for us. So we we have and we continue, you know, to really do as much outreach as possible.
Yeah. Uh, to piggyback off that, yes, we've also reached out to all the neighborhood councils, all the neighborhood groups, community centers, public service agencies to try to get to community residents, city residents, and we've talked about this before as far as thirty-five percent. And our estimation being high, Fior has said that he has surrounded communities that meet those goals and that he would bring in the information because that would be awesome to be able to get to deal with some of those municipalities that are meeting those goals to see how they're doing it and get those strategies. And it'd be great to see if you brought that information, Fior.
Fiore, I see your hands up, and I was I was gonna ask Lisa, I know she does a lot of work with women. Can you, before Fior jumps in there, can you kind of can you speak for the communities that of women or the groups of women that you're working with? Are they, what what are their numbers looking like, if you wouldn't mind?
Um, sure. I mean, I think there's been a lot of work being done to recruit women coming out of Putnam and Springfield public schools. I know there's a big career fair they did recently. We were at it, the painters were at it. So and we're finding, say, on the UMass campuses up there that generally, the numbers are getting met on it, but it's still similar to the challenges Fontaine has been struggling with, you know, certain contractors are doing a good job on it, and certain contractors are still struggling with it. And I think it's, you know, the fact that there's this focus on it helps to send a message to the subs that have not not been doing well, that this is something that they need to continue to be addressing as they are recruiting and bringing on, you know, more workers into their company. But it's it's harder to solve in the short term when a contractor doesn't have it than it is, you know, kind of over time of of them starting to realize that there's new expectations on these jobs. You know, there's Fontaine's participated in the Mass Girls and Trades events of recruiting, you know, from the public schools. There's been outreach that that we do to different community organizations on letting people know about these opportunities. And we're always happy to, if if people have ideas on new organizations or new places in which to do this, help spread the word around opportunities for women in this field.
Just just for clarity, UMass doesn't have a residency goal.
No, no, no.
Worcester's residency goal touches the surrounding communities.
It's a county.
Including including Worcester proper, and they don't make twenty-five percent. And ours is thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
I just want to add those points of emphasis for clarity.
Absolutely. They're really, really good points on that end. And I think it's, you know, the the idea is, of course, with the with the residency component is that it's Springfield money, and we want to create opportunities for Springfield residents. And I think it's been terrific that there's twenty percent on the on the job and twenty percent of the workers are local residents who are getting those opportunities. But, you know, yes, let's all work on continuing to try to create up, increase those numbers as well.
Is it, may I just, I'm gonna get to Fior in a second, but is it a an issue by trade or just strictly by contractor?
I think, I mean, certainly, you know, there's there are trades where you see, you know, I think I think less participation from women in general. But yes, there are definitely some contractors who I think, you know, have also been identified by the committee that, you know, they, you know, historically still continue to to struggle in some areas. So it's it's a little bit of both, I would, in in my experience.
And shade that and Eloy as well. Those particular contractors are, you know, are we putting asterisks in your kind of like, you know, notes as to?
Oh, definitely. Oh, definitely. We we write them, and we send them their letters, and we report out on who they are. And we do our best to stay on them as far as the residents are concerned. And I think that's reflected in Brightwood Lincoln, and I think that's being reflected in here as well. Again, when you juxtapose it and put it side by side with Worcester again, which has two hundred thousand residents, over two hundred thousand residents, Springfield's one hundred and fifty thousand residents. Then you include all the suburbs around Worcester, right? You're talking about East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, West Springfield, Agawam, that they can include those numbers and still not making twenty-five percent. And we're talking about Springfield proper and not all the surrounding areas and making twenty percent. So I just want to put those numbers in context.
Fiore, I thank you for your patience. I believe you're on your phone. Would you like to comment or have a question?
Yeah, so I mean, the problem is, you got a couple of things going on, and the problem is Liz, Lisa, excuse me, just laid out pretty good, which doesn't make a difference which category we're looking at, whether it's women, whether it's minorities, whether it's veterans or residents. It's the contractors knowing that this is no longer a game, that they have to abide by it, getting on board for the last fifteen years to where today we would, we wouldn't be having these conversations. So now we're finally looking at contractors and going, hey, this is no longer a game. But until somebody gets fined at the end of the day, what what is the penalty for these contractors to to do anything? Nothing. So and don't get me wrong, hopefully we'll get there. But I want to back up because when you look at the North End project, we had thirty-four percent residency down there. So it's not about the capacity to get. We had a study done. It's getting these contractors to realize you better start hiring residents. And I want to be fair to some of them. When you look at companies that are from out of state, maybe we should have asterisks. If they never hire one resident, then they don't have to meet that requirement. So maybe those numbers shouldn't apply when it his total hours. The law doesn't apply to him. So including, let's say, five thousand hours towards a residency number, which he doesn't have to meet, is only going to make that lower, that number lower. So again, it would be clear, we can't restrict commerce. Anybody can bid on these projects from wherever they come from. If they consciously never hire one person from Springfield, they don't have to meet the residency requirement. So again, if you look at somebody from Connecticut, Vermont, New Hampshire, wherever they're from, they don't, if they have not one single employee, in including the crane operator, he works for them. So that will skew that number a little bit. But again, we 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 have history of our very first project out of the gate was thirty-four percent. Did it make it? No. Still only thirty-four, but thirty-four is better than twenty, because again, it's all about who's around, what contractors are chosen, what effort is being made by those contractors at the end of the day. Yes, we still have contractors that don't abide, but we want to be clear. It's not the individual contractor's responsibility. It was the general contractor that is being held accountable on these projects. And and again, certain subs are responsible to the city, and that's where that law that I gave you guys would would help the city to get rid of irresponsible contractors that at that level that are under their control as a file submit. And then, of course, the general contractor, the ones under his, would be more of what have you done in the past, looking at those subs and then making them realize if you're coming back, you need to do a better job, get your ducks in order for the for the projects that's been coming with these general contractors that are out there.
So so just for another point of clarity, Brightwood Lincoln was thirty percent, not thirty-four percent. And then just wondering if you were able to bring those municipalities that are meeting the thirty-five percent that you said you would bring to this meeting. So we can actually contact those municipalities to see the strategies that they're using to meet their percentages.
So those were not so misinterpretation of words. I might have said surrounding cities and towns. I said there were projects that, over the years, have met the goals on these projects. They were mostly private projects. So again, you know, we are comparing apples and oranges on a city project. We have a accumulation of both union and non-union. On these private projects, it is a union, all-union project, and the numbers have been met numerous times on these all-union products.
So municipalities and those numbers that we discussed last month well, aren't real.
Well, again, so you can compare, again, I don't, I'm not trying to compare apples.
No, I'm just trying to look for strategies. You 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 said that there are municipalities that are meeting those percentages currently, and that's awesome. That that that's awesome, and I would love to talk to them.
There's requirements on women and minorities. The state of Massachusetts has women.
No, we're talking about residency. This was about residency.
All right, listen, so we can debate each other all day long. It's not healthy. I'm trying to point out, and you're missing my point. It doesn't make a difference which category we're looking at. It's the point that the contractors are actually trying. So you have contractors that do not choose. I don't, you could pick women tomorrow, and we could fail to a zero number because contractors don't want to try anymore. My point is, it's the contractors that are picked and 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 have, some will do better in certain categories, others, some and others, some will never meet anywhere near because it's just the makeup of their their, the size of the crews, the length of the duration of the project, things of that nature. So there's no black and white formula to make it work. My only point is, it is about enforcing an REO that has been on the books to say, if you're going to take this project, what is your game plan? And if they have no game plan, then why are we letting them on the project? It's it's, there's a million things that play into this. And I want to also be clear, if we start going after individual contractors, we need to be careful of that because individual contractors could turn around and do go after the city because it's not their responsibility. Ultimately, the law says it's the general contractor's responsibility. We can put them on notice. We can come up with a game plan, but until we actually come up with a real game plan about what to do with the individuals, then we then we can put them on notice, then we can take action to restrict them. Until then, we're, the law says it's the general contractor's responsibility to meet those numbers based on each product.
Thank you for the clarity. I appreciate it.
In regards to the comment that was made regarding out of state and contractors, if we, would it be a benefit for the theatrics of what we do to improve the numbers by excluding outside contractors? Or, I mean, we're looking at the numbers in its entirety. But if, you know, would that make anybody feel any better, or would that be any more effective if we took those numbers out? And then that way, you know, I just, I don't know. I understand, you know, the the concept that existed from the beginning, that if you're an outside contractor from the state, you don't have to to be smart enough, or if you choose not to to bring your entire crew, you know, it doesn't affect you. Just as I'm aware, also, that when it comes to the ideal of finding or identifying contractors and what have you, we're limited on that as well. And of course, when we started this from the way back in the beginning, you know, we came out the box with a lawsuit and under the threats of lawsuits. And so is there any value to from either Liz, Eloy, or any of you? But to that point, and and I I had to be respectful, I see that we have a couple of hands up. So I threw that question out there. It may not need to have an answer, but I know Eloy put his hand up first, so I'm gonna go to Eloy, and then I'm gonna follow that up with a Lisa. So, Eloy?
Okay, thank you. I I just just want to correct. My name is Aloy.
Eloy.
Aloy, yeah.
Aloy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I do. It happens a lot. But yeah, my name is pronounced Loy. I I would disagree with excluding outside contractors. If they're going to come in and and generate revenue from city funds, they should participating that as well. I I guess when Fiori said that there's a million things that have to be done, I guess the question would be, can we ask ourselves, have we, has everything been done? Have we, you know, have we put enough pressure on the contractors? Have 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 there been, let's say, job fairs? Do city residents, are city residents aware of 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 the opportunities? And so I I think more can be done personally. And that's that's on, that's putting it, you know, some of the onus on the committee, some of it on our office, the contractors, but I I just think that we more can be done to meet these numbers.
Well, obviously, I'm I'm also aware, I mean, right now, the the city is desperate to hire teachers. The Law Department of City Springfield is short. At least once or twice a week, outside of the construction trades, I'm getting some type of flyer outreach, looking for employment opportunities across industries. So, you know, let's kind of just as much as our hearts might be in the ideal of thought that we would like to improve everything, it may not be approvable because of the work. The the ideal, the the standard of which somebody can live in this country, or at least in our community, without in full employment is certainly different than it is in other parts of the world. Lisa, please.
Thank you, Chair. I so I I agree with Aloy that including all contractors, and I just wanted to correct one piece on the outside contractors issue to to my understanding, and I'm I'm not a lawyer myself as well. But it's just that the the law says that if the contractor, it doesn't matter where the contractor is from, but they can only enforce residency of their in-state workers. So if they are, you know, a Connecticut company bringing a hundred percent Connecticut workforce, then no, they don't have to meet residency. But it's, you know, if they have, you know, four workers from Massachusetts and six from Connecticut, then of those four, they're supposed to be meeting the the thirty-five percent residency. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Fiore?
Yeah, that Lisa, like, that's what I said. If it's even one employee, even if it's the crane operator, as long as that one employee is on their payroll, now the requirements kick in. So I'm not saying we have to eliminate that number. We could always add a second category. But again, then it would be, and I mean, I'm not sitting here saying it's not more work for somebody to to sit and establish, is there a Massachusetts worker or not? You'd have to look at certified payrolls. I guess you could ask them. But again, it's just, I'm just trying to point out, the number is definitely skewed just to that fact. Whether or not we want to add a second number, here's what it would be like for these out-of-state contractors that the law doesn't apply, only residency law doesn't apply. The rest still applies to them. So again, I'm I'm comfortable either way. I'm just trying to to be fair to contractors that, you know, again, it's in 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 to be fair to them, they don't have to meet it if they never hire one Massachusetts worker.
To the question, to the point of the fact that I know this committee primarily dresses municipal construction in excess of five hundred thousand dollars. Last night, my colleagues on the council approved a special permit for major construction in it, north in Springfield with the development of a South End Community Center and Office Build Medical Building. Gordon Paulsifer just announced late last week the acquisition of another apartment building. The work is continuing to go on at the former Firestone Building on Rivaham Road and Rivaham Avenue. And of course, there's other projects that are in the pipeline all across the city. For those of you in the construction trades, are you guys fully employed? I mean, is your membership fully employed? That, you know, Lisa or Fiori, can you guys speak to that? Because, you know, my comment earlier about the 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 lack of available workers, you know, we're we're kind of focused just strictly on, you know, right now, mostly our conversation is revolves around Fontaine. They're the biggest employer that under the purview of this committee. But you know, are the carpenters all working? Are are the ironworkers all working in in in?
So I'll jump in. Yes, our members, I mean, we have an out of work list, but it's 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 pretty low right now. It'll go even lower as more work picks up this spring. And we we definitely have an issue of, you know, there are, there's lots of competition for work for new people coming in. So we still get more people who apply to our apprenticeship program than we have good jobs for them. So within the construction industry, there is talk of a workforce shortage. But it's generally more of a shortage on the non-union side than it is on the union side because we do have, you know, our contractors are paying premier wages and benefits. And so there is still, you know, a lot of worker demand for that. But but the result is, is that as we're bringing new people in, there are, there are definitely, you know, not as many responding on creating the diversity of opportunities. So for you know, I have fifty-one women in our union in Western Mass, and they're all working, every single one of them, unless I have a couple who are out pregnant, who are having babies. But other than that, they're all working who want to be. And so you know, right now, if I have a contractor call in asking for a female carpenter, you know, it it's a moving target because sometimes someone gets laid off at the end of the week, and then there's somebody available to put out to a new contractor. But there's definitely an issue. And so we are aggressively working to still recruit and to let people know Springfield residents, let women, people of color, you know, all genders know that there are opportunities in our trade, and we're happy to bring them in if they're interested. So it's kind of like a yes and no answer to you. Yes, there's a worker shortage and a need on recruiting more, and yet we also do have, you know, lots of we're not falling short on being able to put people to work.
Fiore, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I mean, the problem is each union is has a different dynamic. People are only going to, everybody, let's not get each other. No one is applying. The first thing I say to people is if you're applying for a job, there's the door, you know, don't let it hit you on the butt on the way out, because the problem is, that is the reality of a construction company, a construction. What they originally signed up for is a free three to five year schooling, and on top of that, of course, comes along the jobs with our contractors. But but no one is staying the end of the day if there's not work around. So each trade has its issues with keeping people in. Yes, we have issues all taking people in also. But we have an instant capacity to take in forty new people tomorrow and start training them for our contractors as we realize that work is starting to pick up in those in each area that each union might be covering. But again, i- if if there's no workaround, individuals aren't staying because they do need to put food on the table. So it's not like a a plumbing company goes from one job to the next to the next. You know, so there is layoffs, which causes people to 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 drop out. So, you know, it is hard to really say. Lisa is right, there is going to be a definite shortage of construction people, period, just like in the nursing industry. I mean, they're projecting a lot of shortages across it. We are trying to stay ahead of it, each union. But at the end of the day, we're not getting the recruitment. The word is not being spread out there. I don't think I had one woman apply to my apprentice program this January. I've been pretty much grabbing people, anybody that calls out of the street that knows somebody, putting it on my Facebook. I got some calls the other day. And I'm pretty much taking it upon myself to try to put people in that I feel will be, you know, want to give me three years of their life. So again, it is a tough battle, finding people that want to come into the trades. But like Lisa said, we have an advantage over the non-union. The pay is better, the benefits are better. But again, if we don't have the work, they're not staying.
Lloyd. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I have to, I have to go on. I gotta go to a budget, I gotta get going to a budget hearing. But there are no current REO projects. Um, but there are no current REO projects outside of Swanberry. Um, Duggan is a thirty point three nine, uh, MGL project, it's not a build project. Um, Decac Parks and Compliance will get together for the, uh, capital build plan. And see what REO projects will be coming out for the spring and summertime, and I'll report those out at our next meeting.
Alright, you'll come prepared for that, and anything that you need to see before that meeting, please feel free to, uh, send out through Sean. To make sure the committee gets, thank you very much, uh, Loy, are you leaving as well?
Uh, no, but just, I got a question for you guys. Okay, see.
Thank you, Jay.
I had curiosity, uh, start with Fiore, uh, do you have? A, uh, number of Springfield residents? In your union?
Sorry about, um, one, uh, yeah, before I answer, I just want to make one other quick comment to everybody. You got to remember too, the workload, it's easier to take in people as the carpenters, the laborers. And to a certain degree, the operating engineers, because they are signatory to general contractors. So all the work that is under their jurisdiction is being done by union contractors on those. In general contractor project, uh, there are still some non-union general contractors out there, and those could go either way. But they do have, it's a little bit easier for a carpenter, a laborer, and to a certain degree, an operating engineer. Shouldn't say that one, because that is a licensed trade, it's a little bit harder to get in their program. But with that said, they are assigned to GCs. So as far as Springfield residents, I believe the last time I checked. I had accessed about fifteen Springfield residents that still live here. Um, I don't know if I even have a single one that applied, uh, not only did females not apply. I don't even think anybody, uh, from the city of Springfield applied my apprentice program this year.
Uh, Lisa?
Yeah, we have about a hundred, um, members who live in the city. Lots more in the surrounding towns.
Uh, that's, so you say a hundred that, uh, live in the city?
Yeah.
Well, that's fantastic number, uh, and if we go through all the different unions, would, would the numbers be in what range, you think?
Well, the, the laborers and the carpenters are bigger membership-wise. And so I, I would assume that they have more local members, whereas some of the mechanical trades. Might, you know, have just, you know, uh, it's a much smaller number of members across all four counties of Western Mass. And I, I don't, I have no sense of what their membership, their, their numbers are or where they are.
I mean, uh, thank you.
Um, I see Council Whitfield has, is also with us, uh, Tracy, did you have any questions or comments that you wanted to share?
Um, no, just listening, um, just trying to get the information on, um, how we're doing and, you know, what. Um, maybe the barriers that's keeping us from, you know, meeting some of the goal, so, just listening.
Okay, thank you, and, and I, and Tracy, I, I know she does a lot of work, um, trying to recruit minorities and, and. Just in, share, and, and increase the pool of potential, I mean, across, we're, we're just talking about construction. Uh, it's interesting getting people, residents, working in all fields regardless of construction, and, and it's just. You know, the reality is difficult getting people working.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, uh, teachers, and it's not even exclusive to Springfield. Um, there's a large number of minorities now attending school in Islam Meadow, and. The lone Islam Meadow High School has absolutely no minority teachers, and so. Um, I'm, I'm hearing from people whose kids go there and they're concerned with that. So it's not even exclusive to the city of Springfield, of course, this committee just deals with construction and expensive construction and that. But then, um, unfortunately for the city, there's a lot of private construction going on. And, uh, for the benefit of the community, whether it's union-based construction or private, we still need our residents. And our family and friends and neighbors working, so.
Yep.
Liz?
Yeah, and you know, and if I may add, you know, one of the things, um, and, and Lisa alluded to this a little bit earlier, um, you know. Making sure that we are ex, you know, exposing all the career, um, opportunities within the construction industry to. You know, students has been kind of key to what we've been doing with the project. So for example, a couple of weeks ago, we had a group, um, coming in from Youth Build for, uh, for tour, right? Because part of that is, you know, giving folks the exposure, um, you know, to, to what careers, um, in the, in the field could look like. Um, and certainly, you know, that's, you know, for us, something that we are, you know, really committed to even beyond. Um, you know, this, this current project, right? So any, anything that we can help do to, you know, really help students especially, kind of get their hands around. Um, you know, the different opportunities within the trades, that's, you know, something that, you know, we, we are doing, have been doing, and will continue to do.
Yeah, and I, if I could just add in there, um, because I got lucky enough to be a part of that tour with, with Springfield Youth Build. So it was out of the, the youth build out of the New North Citizen Council, and it was, uh, I don't know, twenty or so young people. Um, I, it was, it was several hours that Fontaine, um, had, uh, taken them around. And had one of their young assistant supers who, um, is younger, so more relatable to the young people. A person of color, Springfield resident who, um, walked them around and explained, you know, all the aspects of the work. And it was, you know, two hours plus, kind of just in the job site itself, and then more time out in the trailer, answering questions. Um, and, uh, it was, it was terrific, um, having that opportunity, and I know Youth Build, um, really appreciated, um, having that as well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and, uh. Brooke, go ahead, Tim. You, Tim, if you said something, it's muted. Tim, I think you're talking, but we can't hear you. I can only see the top of your head, but it looked like when I did get, uh, I don't know if you're saying anything.
Uh, if I could quickly jump in, so one of the, the things that, um, you know, I just want to make mention that when. So I, I do go to Franklin Tech, uh, we have gone in person, talked to the students twice this year alone. Um, we, I have not been to our own Putnam recently. Uh, I can tell you, I used to take the kids to job sites even, if that's something they wanted to do. But my point on the Putnam is that teachers know that the ironworkers are out there, the instructors, uh, in the welding shop. The problem is guidance counselors had absolutely no clue that the construction trades start kids at, at twenty something dollars an hour with some benefits. And so it definitely needs to be sold more in these high schools, especially in the guidance counselor level. That in itself is a, is something that needs to be looked at, uh, just wanted to, to make that quick point out there also.
Actually, thank you, and, and actually.
Oh, Mel, another thing, so, uh, actually, Iron Workers Union actually got smart. Um, we looked, we looked at a national, we have a national drug program, so if anybody smokes pot, you, and you get bagged on pot, you're getting thrown out. My only point is, because there's no real testing, pot stays in your body for thirty days. Uh, we definitely don't want people smoking marijuana on a job site. Uh, but we have actually taken marijuana out of our testing, which will, will get. Uh, a little bit more opportunities to people to get in our program that might recreationally, want to highlight that word. Uh, um, smoke pot, so there are still drug-free jobs, which is a difference. They will be restricting themselves to get on those jobs if they continue to smoke pot, but, uh, we have lightened up, uh, because of the new laws. And the way, uh, states are passing it around the country.
Thank you, um, and then the, uh, uh, Tim, did you, uh, can we hear you now? Okay. Well, we know Tim has something to say, we can't hear him, but, um, apologize. Um. I know that I had heard from a young man recently, a few weeks ago, um, he is, uh, graduating. I, I think there's a gap or cliff there between, um, the age of when he gets out of school until he can come to work, kind of thing, so. I, it's always seems like there's some type of barrier or difficulty for somebody, um, but I'm hopeful anyway. Um. Anything else that we need to kind of address?
Melvin, if I quickly jump in, you are correct, the kid, uh, if a person graduates at seventeen, they cannot, uh, join a Massachusetts apprentice program. Until they're eighteen years old, so there is definitely a disconnect in a timeframe that goes by before they, uh, can actually join up.
Let, um, anybody else have anything they wanted to share or offer? Uh, my apologies, I, my apologies to Tim, we see you, we, we see that you're trying to say something, but we can't hear you, so. Um. I don't know what, I don't know how to handle. Uh, he's trying to show us something, anybody, any ideals?
I'm not a good sure, a charades player.
Yeah. Well, my apologies, Tim, we, we, we're not, we're not getting it, um, we seen the top of the car mostly, the advisor. Okay, I think, I'm gonna give him a second, I think he's trying to write something, no, yep, maybe.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got to take off for another meeting.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, appreciate your time, we'll try to get another meeting in sometime late April. Um, and please feel free to share any information among us, uh, that we need to hear. Uh, any agenda items, please get them to chat, to, to, uh, Sha- Sean. Um, he'll include them in the next meeting, and I do appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much. Aloy, did I, I get it? Oh, okay, um, my apologies.
Yeah, thank you.
To all of you, please, thank you for making me smarter, appreciate your time, thank you.